It's going to suck up as much stuff as I can get.
Is there a goal?
The light on.
Really? Lights on, lights on.
These guys are, you know, everybody's kind of climbing on stuff, but it's getting...
It's not sucked up the way it should be. It's facing down.
Camera?
The light.
The light? Okay.
What's on? I don't know.
All right. Okay. All right, thank everybody for coming. Uh, CNN at 6:30, we'll call a meeting to order. First item on our agenda is a review and approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Uh, any corrections that need to be made to that? Hearing none, I'm open for a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding language to section 154.127, site dimensional standards, uh, increasing the maximum impervious surfaces for institutional uses in residential districts. Before we open the public hearing, do we have a staff report?
We do. On page six of your packet, you should have a staff report there. Um, and that's with a number of items tonight. They're, um, related to specific, um, projects that the planning commission's taking a look at. Um, we're talking about institutional uses, so in this case, we're looking at a, uh, a school project or a, you know, educational facility. And I know that Laura's got that report and it's quite detailed, so if you haven't had a chance to read through it, uh, please do so. Um, basically looking at increasing those, um, so that the standard is, um, made a little easier for them to function with. Uh, and I think Laura can give us some more feedback if you'd like.
All right, Laura, we'll give you the opportunity.
Sure, thank you. Um, as, uh, Tim said, the ordinance before you, uh, we, it came to our attention for a need to update the language of the zoning ordinance regarding impervious surfaces in the residential district. Um, it came to our attention because of the ZED school, um, application, which, um, we'll be considering later this evening. However, this ordinance change is, um, being, uh, pushed through by staff, or, excuse me, recommended by staff, um, as the city led endeavor to, as it came to our attention, that, um, previously prior to, or, prior to the new update, that, um, impervious surface limits have been raised for these types of uses through the conditional use permit process. And now as these uses are no longer, um, considered conditional uses, but actually are now permitted with standards, um, a new function is required, so it's an update. And so, looking at some of those, um, these would apply to residential districts, citywide. Um, so it's not just in the case of the ZED school, but, um, going forward with any, uh, of these institutional uses within residential districts. Um, staff has put together language proposing, um, an upper limit of 65% for these uses. Um, looking at some other examples of existing institutional uses within residential districts, it seems like a reasonable amount within the city, um, still offering plenty of space for open space. Um, and also the language within the recent code update has, um, promoted more buffering and landscaping, um, between these uses and residential properties. So, we don't feel that the impact is going to be too difficult. This is more correcting and oversight through our, um, or, excuse me, our code update.
Okay, any questions of Laura? From the panel? Laura or Tim, do we have, uh, opportunity to review, if we approve this, do we have the opportunity to review if there's a concern with flooding in the area?
Well, every, every application that we take is evaluated for its stormwater impact.
Okay.
And, um, I still, I would, I mean, I would say yes.
This, so this wouldn't override?
This doesn't necessitate, you know, as we receive flat applications, we would evaluate that for, uh, for stormwater impacts.
Okay.
Uh, to be clear though, the, um, in this particular case, the site plan review process is done administratively, so the site plan will not be coming before the, uh, commission for approval. Um, but if, uh, like Tim said, if there are plating or anything along those lines, that is definitely going to be required.
Okay.
Well, and just one thing to highlight. So, with the changes we made, we don't necessarily need approval of a site plan. And typically, if it's a smaller function, we won't be bringing it to planning commission. However, certain ones we may choose to bring, I mean, I will choose to bring to you anyways, just because I'm going to look for feedback from the planning commission. You may not have to approve it, but it would still be good for you to see what's going on. And, you know, for example, would be, you know, uh, with a larger project or something like that.
Yeah, well, and, you know, all, my question was raised based on personal experience.
Exactly.
As you probably know, uh, with the school parking lot put in, there's a considerable amount of flooding through my property now, so as a result. So, I want to be mindful of other property owners that may face the same impact to this.
Right.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions or comments from the panel for Laura, I will open the public hearing. Uh, anybody who wants to speak to this, uh, please come to the podium, introduce yourself and provide us with your address. All right, last call. All right, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Discussion. Anything to discuss on this? Any further? Okay. Everybody is okay with it?
Straightforward.
I see we've got two resolutions. Uh, can we do this with one motion, or would you like two separate motions?
I think, uh, we can do them both with one motion.
Okay. So, seeing there's no public comment and no further discussion, I'm open for a motion to approve. Let me pull up the resolution so I get it right.
Your recommendations to the city council.
Okay, yep.
Just recommending these.
Yes.
Uh, resolutions to be brought to the council for final approval.
Thank you for their clarification. So, I'm open for a motion to recommend approval to the city council on both, uh, forms. The ordinance, change in the ordinance, uh, regarding maximum impervious surface standards, and the resolution for publication. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Next item, if I can get back to my Dropbox. Yeah, go ahead.
So, on page 11 in your packet, you have the beginning of the, um, report. Um, basically, I'll just give a little overview. Uh, so the applicant, which is the Zumbro Education District, represented by Patrick Gordon, applied for development in their property of, of 2002 Manorville Avenue North. Uh, the proposed development, which annexes an existing 6.12 acre parcel, is looking for development for a school facility, providing special education services to our district and several other school districts in the area. Um, recently, they went through a lot split process with Dodge calling to establish the new parcel. Um, the property is being transferred from the, uh, the Casson Manorville School District to the, the ZED. Um, as noted previously, this isn't a residential, uh, zoned area, or will be a residentially zoned area when annexed. Um, are there any questions on that initially? Um, I think we're familiar with, commissioners should be familiar with this project. It's something that we've heard a lot about, and recently it's received some media coverage, because I believe they're looking to move forward here this year. Um, including your packet, on page 13, you have a, a map of that site. You can see where the, uh, the, the change would be and the addition to the, um, the city limits as well. In essence, what we're looking for today would be, um, to authorize the comp plan change, which, uh, when this was, uh, when the comp plan was approved, it, uh, it's set up in a certain way, and now in, in essence, we're looking at a different use of this property that is not part of the comprehensive plan when it, when it was approved. Laura, I don't know if you want to highlight anything else initially?
Um, that covered much of it, thank you. Uh, as Tim had mentioned previously, um, the site plan is included in your packet for reference, and, um, we can certainly talk about it, but again, the site plan review, um, is going to be conducted at the, by the city staff. Um, so, this is more for reference and, um, discussion, but, uh, no motions or approvals will be given on the site plan itself. Um, and we also have, um, representative of ZED, Patrick Gordon, as well as, um, the engineer Abby Hamm, uh, on video. If they are available to speak as well.
Okay. Any questions of Laura or Tim before we open the, up? Okay, then I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Uh, same rules apply as the previous one, um, regarding the ZED comprehensive plan amendment.
I think it'd be appropriate to invite our representatives from ZED.
Yep.
Probably commented this time.
So, yep. So, our representatives from ZED, would you like to have anything to add to Laura's presentation?
Uh, this is Patrick Gordon, the ZED executive director. Um, this has been, uh, 30 years in the making for us, so we're just excited to get to this point. Um, but, uh, we've got a good plan, and our hope is we can still move this forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Anybody from the public wanting to speak to this? All right, last call? No? Okay, I will close the public hearing on this particular item. Discussion. It's everybody's thoughts.
School next to another school makes sense. So, the next thing it, uh, um, just a potential concern in the future is just to turn lane. The church has never had one, so how do you incorporate that in the future, but I know we're not talking about that now, so.
Lonnie, anything?
Not really.
Sheldon?
No.
Alan? All right. Then I'm open for a motion to recommend approval.
We've got two, uh, two of those ordinances there that would be recommending approval for.
Scroll down to my...
Sorry, Mr. Chair, just as a point of order.
Yep.
Still have the public hearing for the establishing the zoning. Um, I'm not sure how, if you would like to do all the public hearings first and then a motion for all of the items, or, um, but just to make sure you're aware.
That sounds like a good plan, Laura. Thank you. All right, we'll hold off on any motions then on that, and we'll go ahead and open the public hearing regarding the ZED rezone. Any further discussion, staff discussion on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, you're cognizant, you know, why we're doing this.
Yep.
Like Karen said, it's, uh, it's an institutional use, so.
Yep. Okay. Anybody from the ZED that want to speak on the rezone? No? Okay, I'll open it up to the public in attendance. Anybody would like to speak to the rezone request? Last call. We'll close the public hearing on the ZED rezone request. Discussion from the panel? All right, then I'm open for a motion, this time for both ordinance recommendations.
I'll make a motion for both the, uh, rez, uh, comprehensive plan adjustment and the, the rezone.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
They got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Thank you for, those from representing ZED for attending our meeting. And next on the agenda, we have a public hearing regarding common acres comprehensive plan amendment.
So, you can see the staff report there, starting on page, uh, 21, and, uh, this must be what everybody's here for tonight, so with the excitement in our earlier public hearings. Um, this is a large proposal on the east side of, uh, of Casson, off of 16th Street, and the, uh, the board has seen these, uh, maps earlier. They've been shared as information. Tonight, we're, uh, seeking some action from the, uh, from the, uh, board to recommend, uh, some different things to the council. Um, it's reasonably straightforward. The property owner has petition for annexation, which would necessitate a, uh, a change as well in our, uh, comprehensive plan to amend this to a little bit, uh, looser, uh, larger lot size kind of style development, which has not been the, the norm over the last few years. Um, other than that, Laura, is there anything else you'd like to highlight for them?
Uh, yes, so, um, as Tim was saying, there's a number of different applications that are being considered tonight, uh, and we have to do them in a particular order. Um, so first for your consideration is the comprehensive plan amendment. Um, within that request is two considerations. Uh, the first being a, um, text amendment to the description of low-density residential within the comprehensive plan, um, to allow some of that flexibility that someone was talking about, under cer- certain circumstances, for, um, properties within the low-density residential to go below the minimum of two units acre, and to have more of that rural, large lot style development. Um, the language that, uh, staff has drafted and that we recommend, um, uh, in certain circumstances where this would be appropriate, and, um, those are that a lower-density neighborhood pattern already exists on, uh, within the area on adjacent parcels, um, that the development is on the outer edges of the city's growth boundary, um, and that the, uh, excuse me, extended to these surfaces will not put an unnecessary burden on the city or existing residences, um, as well as, um, existing natural resources or habitat areas are, um, presented, or present or, um, being conserved in, uh, some way that necessitates that larger lot pattern. The second part of the comprehensive plan amendment request is then to, uh, re-guide the property from long-term growth to, uh, low-density residential as the future land use. Um, request after, uh, the comprehensive plan amendment is then to establish zoning of R1 upon annexation, and then consideration of the preliminary flat subdivisions for the property. Um, and I can go into details of that now or wait until the preliminary flat discussion.
What's the desire of the panel? Do you want to hear that now or later? All right, Laura, it's, uh, let's go for it.
All right. Um, I'm just going to share my screen really quick, and... Um, so before you, the subdivision, uh, provided, or, excuse me, the preliminary flat provided by the applicant, um, they are proposing, uh, 38 single-family, large lot residential duh, uh, uh, single-family residential development. Um, other elements within the, um, proposed, that they are proposing, a continuation of the 16th Street Trail, uh, at Brunswick, on 16th Street northeast. Um, the roadways are, um, proposed to be open ditch street design rather than carving gutter. And they're showing within this, uh, their preliminary flat, the, uh, possible future, uh, street stuff, or future connection to the east, um, outside of the city, so a... Within your packet, they did include a number of discussion points that, um, perhaps after the public hearing, we'd be happy to answer any additional information on, but, um, uh, some discussion points that staff wanted to highlight during the review of the preliminary flat included the density of the lot, which is, um, being addressed through the comp plan amendment. Uh, the discussion of street connectivity, possibly to a township, um, road, or, excuse me, a township road to the north, um, as well as, uh, what is being proposed here. Uh, walkability of the area, park dedication, no park is being proposed for this property. Um, instead, it's the OC and Luwau. Um, as I mentioned, the trail connections along 16th Street. Um, and there have been, uh, discussions with the DNR about, uh, possible connection for future, um, state trail through this property. Um, however, that is not being shown on the preliminary flat today. Um, and then, uh, addressing some concerns about stormwater and drainage for this type of development.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Any questions from the panel for Laura, or, at this time? Uh, I did have one question regarding the language amendment, um, regarding the low-density. Some concern with the development, the phrase, the development is on the outer edges of the city's growth boundary. We have, you know, we continue to grow as a community, and we've got areas of urban expansion that we may not know of at this point in time. So, I, I just wonder, and I, again, this is somewhat, um, related to the location where I live in Little Meadow, that not too far in the distant future, I can see where we're going to be surrounded by, um, the community. Uh, we've certainly got the city sewer on one side, but to the north is the Lamplin property develops further to the north. We're no longer on the edge.
Right.
Uh, and I just don't know if we were to put this clause into the comprehensive plan, and any other large lot developments were to come in, how does that relate to our potential urban expansion? So, that's, that's the only question I had regarding that language.
Do you have any suggested alternatives, Dwayne?
I hadn't put a thought into it.
Sure.
It makes sense as, as it's written, but it makes sense now. Is it going to make sense in the future? And how many versions of the comprehensive plan are we going to go through before that becomes an issue?
Right. Well, and depending on property ownership, you may see some leapfrog, you know, 16th Street's a good example.
Yeah.
It may not be congruent developments. You may have people, somebody wants to, to put it in their field half a mile down the road.
Yep.
It isn't going to be on the edge anymore, but it'll still be, ultimately be annexed.
Yep.
Well, that's a good point. I guess, well, I don't know if you heard all that, but, uh, I think the big issue is with that description of the development being on the outer edge of the city's growth boundary, and if there's any other suggested language that might fit a little bit better in terms of, uh, just how we state that, so that we don't have to go through and revise it if there's a leapfrogging or some sign of a, sort of thing that comes up in the next couple of years, because our growth is pretty steady right now, so.
Sure, yeah. Um, I can certainly look into that, um, and, um, I think that that is, uh, worth discussing further.
I mean, you could even make it so that it's sort of, uh, the development is on the current border of the city's growth pattern or something like that. Maybe that's a little bit less firm language.
Yep.
That would make sense, because, I mean, just because it's, we, we could, any place can be part of our growth pattern.
Yeah.
We typically are seeing most of it on the north side.
Our side, yeah.
The south side, we may see some growth as well in the future, so.
Yeah.
Wherever land is available to be bought and developed.
And people are interested in developing it, even if it has a certain cost, right?
Yeah.
There's land that's right next town you can't buy and can't develop, so.
That's true. Would that be amenable, Laura, or not?
Uh, yes, absolutely. You can, um, certainly change that language a bit, find some, uh, different wording for that, not to necessarily tie it to the city's growth boundary, as that growth boundary continues to change, so find different language for that.
So, as we craft this language, how does that impact the rest of what we want to do tonight here?
Well, I mean, these are recommendations to the city council, so if that's a recommendation, if we're making a motion to approve these, or forward them to the city council, and we can see that amended language in the council packet on Wednesday.
Wednesday night, okay.
We can make that change as part of this resolution before Wednesday's meeting.
Okay.
I think that should be timely, shouldn't it, Laura?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, so, I mean, that would be my idea. I don't think it necessarily stops this in any way.
Okay.
Because obviously, it's just a matter of the semantics, and we want to make sure that it's clear.
Yep. Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, then I'll open the public hearing regarding common acres comprehensive plan amendment. Uh, everybody's heard the discussion up to now. Uh, anybody wanting to comment on that portion of it?
Uh, good evening. Uh, I'm Mike Paradise, I'm the president of Bigelow Harbs, 4057 28th Street, Northwest Rochester. I am pinch-hitting for Tony tonight, so, um, I'll do my best to answer any questions. Uh, the conversation about the lot sizes, I'm sure the commission knows what we have going on in Casson now. We have some smaller lots, some townhomes, Bigelow, uh, Bigelow Voight, single-family, Houston, single-family, Meadowbrook. This would give us another option. It would help to diversify some of the housing stock and some of the options that we have to give in Casson, so that's really the big, uh, push behind the lot size. As far as the, um, the rest of the conditions, uh, we're okay with that. The only concern we have is, of course, running that road, connecting that city road to the township road. Our plot shows a cul-de-sac there. I know there was some conversation about connecting that to the township road. Tony has submitted a letter with his thoughts on it. One of my concerns is it's, we're creating kind of a peaceful neighborhood there, and once we connect it to the township road, we're adding a lot of traffic there. Personally, I grew up out in that area, and if I would have had that road there, that's how I would have stuck to school every day. So, I think you'll create, uh, a shortcut through there and probably change the makeup of the neighborhood. Some of those houses have been there for quite a while. Um, then I'm open for any questions that the commission may have.
All right, thanks, Mike. Um, what you just presented is for our public, later public hearings, so we'll take those comments and carry them forward.
Okay.
Right now. We appreciate you coming, stepping forward, and we'll definitely call on you when we get to the other, next sections. Yep. Yep, this is just, again, public hearing, just on the amendment to the comprehensive plan. plan.
Thank you for upholding your speak, I'm Rod Jorgensen. Before I, before I start, I don't know if this is, it's germane to what some of the comments I have, so, can I ask first, is, uh, is city water and sewer going to service this, or?
Yes.
Completely city water and sewer?
Yep.
Okay, all right, that's different than what I had heard, so I'm glad I asked that. Again, I'm Rod Jorgensen, two seven one zero zero, six hundred twenty-fifth Street, Casson. I'm a lifelong area resident, um, in fifteen of those years, I actually lived in the city of Casson, and most of those years in the city of Casson, I served on this, uh, on this committee. I'll note that my mother owns the parcel directly south of the proposed development, which I also have an interest in. Um, when I received the public hearing notice, I immediately thought of the recently completed City of Casson Comprehensive Plan when I went online. I actually reviewed it a couple of years ago when it was completed, I don't know exactly the date, the online version I found was something of 2018, but I remember reviewing it, um, and thought it was very extensive and well thought out, and with input from several stakeholders and residents. The past few days, I've reviewed the comp plan again as it relates to this proposed development, uh, and as you know, zoning should follow the general principles of the comprehensive development. Uh, since my first question was answered, I'll just state now, relating to the comprehensive plan, uh, you, uh, this would change what that parcel was considered, at least, you can see it throughout the comprehensive plan, that it was in its long range, and I think that you have acknowledged that, and, uh, and, um, know that also. I just think in the amount of time we are here today, from when that was done, of all the effort put into that, that I don't think that that change is warranted. Um, uh, it was done very recently, and so, um, I think by changing the language, you are basically saying, you're disregarding the research that went into the previous comprehensive plan to accommodate this development. So, as it relates to the comp plan, that's what I would, um, say, and I would encourage you not to change it. Thank you.
Thanks, Rod.
I'm Carrie Hupman, I live on two five six eight oh, six hundred and twenty-fifth Street, and it is not Sixteenth Street at that point, it is six hundred and twenty-fifth Street. So I'm going to pick up where Rod left off, um, when we were building out there and trying to split off for our family, um, homes, we were given, given a lot of grief building out there, and at the time, um, there was a lot of concern about the density and density of houses. And, um, we did get to build after a lot of, um, grief, so to speak, and, um, because they didn't want a lot of houses put together at once, and you might think that thirty-eight lots on fifty-one acres is not a lot of houses, but when you are actually outside of town, that is, and it was supposed to be considered rural residential. I also think that should not change. Now, I know you're going to fight me on this, and I would expect it, but, um, I have a lot of concerns. Um, I have the acreage that abuts up to that entire section. My house is not that far away from that, those fifty-one houses. So, there is already some water drainage that comes right across my property every time it rains. I would expect that to be addressed, and the water to be shuffled away from there. Um, so, and you can see that with the erosion patterns even in the fields. Um, and then, you know, how would you address this? Would there be a drain pond, which I look at as a mosquito breeding ground? I have had animals in the past, is there going to, what are, what are, how are, how are my, um, how's my property, am I going to have complaints against me? Um, is there going to be smell complaints, noise complaints? Are people going to actually be able to, um, post these complaints against me? And I am going to have to change the way I work because of these neighbors. Um, I think people forget there's an understanding living in the country, that we do have smells you might not think are pleasant, or we're afraid that crow at four thirty-five in the morning, or chickens, or turkeys, or they might like my bees next door. Um, so I have a lot of concerns about that. Um, even my dog, you know, all of a sudden, I have to worry about my very friendly dog not biting somebody unless they treat him inappropriately. And then that's still all on me, I would say. Um, I guess there was a question at one point, there was supposed to be an easement road along that fence line as well, and I am guessing that is completely out of the question, and not on any, um, plots at, at this point. And as far as connecting the two sides together, I think originally, that was considered for, um, bike fire trucks to go through, if there was a fire on one side or the other, just to get, get traffic in fast if there was emergencies. And we had the bike trail plan in there. Um, so I have talked about the liabilities against me, um, it was supposed to be rural residential, and it sounds like that is what you're proposing to take away, and I don't agree with that. Um, I guess I would direct this to, directly to the people that would be building, and that's the extra garbage, and garbage that never seems to get cleaned up or, um, tied down. We've had a lot more garbage out on that road. Um, I've picked up a, a lot of garbage that gets blown across, I'm sure Rod has it in his fields too, I've seen it out there. Um, not, Rodney doesn't have that field, but his family, um, and I look at this as actually reducing my property value itself. If I don't have neighbors and decide I want to sell my sixteen acres that runs along there, I'm sure somebody that wants to come in and buys it, buy it, would prefer not to have neighbors as well, and would pay for that. Um, I guess at this point, that's most of what I have to bring forward. Thank you.
My name is Mike Hupman, I live at two five six eight zero, six hundred and twenty-fifth Street in Casson. Um, one point that I'd like to just, um, mention is that you're talking about, you know, one acre, a little bit more per house, and right now, that all of the houses out there are on five acres or more. So it doesn't really make sense to me that you'd be talking about one acre per house or, or, um, you know, in that range. I think if you want to maintain what's out there, most of the houses sit on five to fifteen or twenty acres. So I think you need to consider that. I don't, I don't think, you know, one house per acre, acre and a half, I don't think that's appropriate for that. And I also think there's a lot of land closer to the city that isn't being developed right now, and rather than hosscotching your way out to Byron, it'd be better if you just went, built the city out naturally, I think it'd be a lot better on, and like Rod said, if that comprehensive plan was put together appropriately, that's probably something you should be following.
I'm Dallas Holtz, I live at two five six seven six, six hundred and twenty-fifth Street. I moved here in nineteen sixty-six, and I was two miles out of town. My daughter just spoke, she's on my property. I had to go through hoops and whatnot from the county zoning, from the township, just to build a house out there for my family, to move, move on to a property that I owned to have my family move out. Now, I can show you my fence line, that's been there since nineteen sixty-six. Part of that fence line, my fence line's probably two feet higher than the property you're going to go on and, uh, develop. Well, most of that dirt, oil, water, that whole fifty-one acres goes across our property. So if you want to get something going out there, you better have a darn good plan to shed water out, and as far as I'm concerned, the city of Casson has never been a good neighbor. I see them, on the other side of me, they built a sewer plant years back, that did not work, so they fixed it, and it still didn't work, and they were putting the water across my land then. So you're not real, real friendly neighbors. And as far as I'm concerned, you should not change your objectives. Also, that township road that runs through there should be reopened. It's a, sure, you can say it's a unsafe for the people that want a quiet neighborhood, but it's an outlet, another outlet. And you just got your second outlet when you put that road through here a year ago from the city of Casson. Now, I understand the city of Casson pushed that road through, and had no consideration for us people on two hundred and fifty-sixth Street. So, all I'm saying, if you're going to, going to develop country out in the country, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go along with this organization. I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any more comments regarding the comprehensive plan? All right, then we'll go ahead and call, close the public hearing, and discussion regarding the language on the comprehensive plan. And any other comments that were provided by the public?
My first question comes up is how, how is a city, when putting a comprehensive plan together, supposed to know when property owners are willing to sell their property? I mean, I totally understand that, I think, you know, building, I think, you know, Mike can allude to this if he, if he wants to answer a question, but, you know, trying to put sewer and water out into a development area costs a lot of money. If you can be doing sewer, sewer and water right next to town, you would choose to do that, but you only can go purchase land where land is available and to purchase. And so, and it wasn't a part of the comprehensive plan, and I think people did everything they could, but...
Yeah, I guess I would even preface, just looking at the comprehensive plan, looking at the map, I'm looking at that right now, and, I mean, this parcel is in the growth zone.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, it's delineated as part of the growth, I mean, if it was further to the north or further to the east, that isn't necessarily, but this, this parcel is in the growth area. So I think that maybe the, you know, when they were planning it, they did look at that when they, I mean, they anticipated that.
Yeah. I mean, as, as a city, I mean, we want to see three houses per acre when we're looking to do something, because that spreads the costs out more for future and everything like that, and, you know, I think this is a fairly good compromise, being out in a rural area, and ultimately, um, you know, the choice is you either build in the township and do what the township wants, or you come to the city and ask to tie into the city and kind of, you know, basically go from there, so we have to deal with what we've been asked to, to deal with at this point.
Well, in my view, the comprehensive plan is a guide. It, it's nothing that's set in stone, it is only a guide, it's going to change as our needs change, as the public changes. I understand what you're getting at. When me and Rod lived in northeast, we had a bean field behind us, and within three years, we were buried two streets in, if Rod can remember that. Um, there was, I, I wish we could preserve, you know, rural from city, but the problem is the more we grow, and we're going to continue to grow, and I'm a farm kid, I understand what you're getting at, but with mail growing, Casson's going to grow, expansion's going to go, we need lots like what they're looking for, like Little's. We haven't had lots like that in quite some time, and people are looking for them. It's inevitable that it's going to happen, it's inevitable that the city's going to grow, we're going to move into territory that people aren't going to like, and I understand your views completely, I really do. But it's the nature of the beast with moving on, and it's the way it is.
Sheldon?
I agree a lot with what Lonnie said, you know, it's, to see the future, we try to, when the plan was brought to light, it, it tries to do its best to see where we're going to be, but, you know, it, a lot depends on what land sells, what land doesn't, and it, it changes things, that you, you try to have this beautiful plan, but there's, there's just some things in it that are going to change, as far as where the land is its own animal, and whoever's going to sell it is going to be the one that gets the development.
Um, I'd probably echo maybe the same comments, I really don't have much more to add to that. I think, uh, you know, this is looking at larger lot sizes for these homes, kind of like Aaron was saying, sort of a compromise in terms of density, um, being out on, on the edge. Again, it's, it's something they're going to run into, um, and, you know, I mean, there's, there's got to be a market for it if it's what's being asked for, and I would assume that developer has done his research, that, you know, there's a market out there for these lots.
Okay. Joe, any comments on the comp plan?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with everything that's, that's, uh, already been said. The only other thing that I would add is, you know, uh, just a comment to kind of what Mike had already said earlier, um, that this is, uh, they've already got two other developments, three other developments, you know, um, this is just another, you know, another option, um, you know, for, for a very busy builder in our community, um, and like Lonnie said, it's something that, it's, we have a need for it, so.
So, uh, in my comments, uh, I'll go back to the suggested language, we need to amend that prior to, uh, presenting that to the council, but I also have to say that the comp plan with its future land use, this was a comp plan that was put together with the opportunity for over five thousand people in our community to provide input into, and we took what input we did receive and put this forward, so this should not be a surprise to anyone that this is the city growing into that area, so...
I mean, I guess that's where I go back to, I mean, it is on the map.
Yep.
I think we, we really are following our comprehensive plan, because we, we do look at that as a guide.
Yep. Okay, so, if there's no further discussion on this component of it, then I am open for a motion to approve the language, uh, and recommending to the council, um, the language regarding amending the comprehensive plan, regarding the low-density residential limits, with the understanding that we've got one clause that will be tweaked ahead of time. Okay, I'm open for that motion. I'll go ahead and move that we recommend to the council. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We've got a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Let's then move on to item number two regarding the rezone request. And Laura, any more that you want to add to the rezone as far as the staff report?
Um, just as a note that, uh-
Um, just as a note that, uh, this rezoning is, um, because of the annexation process is, um, done via a resolution, and we can't actually change the zoning map, uh, through a resolution, we have to have an ordinance tied to it as well. So this is directly tied to the annexation, um, which is being considered by the city council and township board. Um, the property is within the orderly annexation agreement area, um, and, uh, the proposed zoning is R1, uh, which is in compliance with the recommended comp plan amendment, uh, for the property.
Okay. Do you have anything to add?
No, that's, uh, it's a, this, this ordinance is pretty straightforward.
Okay. And I'll just reiterate, this is a, uh, joint agreement that's with the township, um, potential joint agreement, they'll have to sign off on it, but this is something that we've had in plan, place for the township for an extended period of time. So with that, I will open the public hearing regarding the rezone request. Okay, last call. All right, go ahead and close the public hearing. Gentlemen, any further comments regarding the rezone? Then I'm open for a motion recommending to the council that, uh, pending the signed agreement with the township, that the rezone, um, ordinance be changed, bringing in this property at an R1.
I'll make that motion.
Get a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then the final public hearing, um, this is regards to preliminary plat, uh, Laura has already shared the design. And Laura, any additional information that you have thought of since we last heard from you?
Uh, not at this time.
All right, thank you.
You all should have received that, uh, letter from, uh, Mr. Bigelow and had a chance to review that. Uh, I know that staff had taken a look at some, uh, different options, and, uh, that's probably the, the biggest discussion for tonight.
My comment would be, being a lifelong resident of Casson and being a person who used to ride his bike out to the golf course and have a locker out there and do things that, uh, the city of Casson has done a good job of, you know, maintaining, um, traffic flows and, you know, um, when I put in the circles right across from the, the high school that stopped people from being able to travel all the way up and down, so I would not recommend adding the, the road attachment to the township. Um, I feel that people in the township are really gonna be very eager to change something that they've, they've lived in, I, I totally understand the, the comments earlier from the, from the people who had to go through tooth and nail to rezone things in the township, um, from that standpoint. So, I mean, I think they've done a great job of, you know, doing this, they've addressed a lot of the, the water issues. I've been out there, I've walked the property, I've looked at it extensively, and I think they've tried to address all of those spots where water is flowing, and so I feel that it, uh, all makes, makes good sense.
Laura, do you wanna talk a little bit about that, maybe? Uh, if you wanna talk a little bit about the stormwater retinage, uh, areas, that might be something good to discuss a little bit.
Yes, um, I'm, I am no means a, uh, water expert, uh, the, um, proposed grading that you see on the preliminary plat, the applicant has included the grading, um, for the, uh, street design as well as, um, where the ponding areas are proposed to be, um, they're actually looking out loud aid over here, um, to have a proposed ponding area and to go into an agreement with the adjacent property owner, um, to actually pond on that adjacent property as well. Those elements would be finalized through the final planning process. Also showing a proposed ponding area, um, and this is the western border here, um, of the property. And as far as the extent of those, um, I don't have the specific designs in front of me, and, um, it'd probably be something for the city engineer to talk more about, um, when he's available.
Yeah, and actually, uh, just one thing Laura had mentioned, on, on page forty-four in the, uh, members packets, you do have, uh, you do have the city engineer's report, his letter, and I don't know if we've got a representative who can maybe address that as well. Thank you very much.
My name's Jesse Preston, I'm twenty-nine oh five, South Broadway, Rochester. I'm a project manager for WHKS, working on, uh, um, the project. I guess if you've got any other questions about the stormwater, I can try and handle that as best as I can, but Laura's correct, we've got three locations right now where we're utilizing different, um, two different forms of, uh, stormwater management, uh, from infiltration along the west property line and on the north property line, and then on the shared, uh, pond in the middle where you, we didn't have, we had done some soil investigation, we don't have the right soils to really do the infiltration we needed, so we are u- using, utilizing more of a filtration pond, uh, so we will not have standing water in any of the three ponds, they're all dry ponds. Um, yeah. Trying to think of what else. So we are looking at rate control on all three ponds, along with the infiltration requirements, um, the, uh, with this type of a rural ditch design, it does give us a little better chance on slowing some of that water down too, because it's going through, uh, a ditch section in lieu of going through a concrete pipe, or co-, um, or going down, um, curb and gutters that kinda flush that water away really quick. So, um, I guess if there's any other questions, I can sure, try and help the best I can.
All right. Stay tuned.
I will.
Okay, thanks. All right. Any additional questions before I open it up? All right, then I'll go ahead and open the public hearing regarding the preliminary plat. We have heard some comments already, anybody wanna add to the comments already provided?
Uh, again, Rod Jodinson, two seven one zero zero, six hundred twenty-fifth street. Uh, just a couple extra comments in, uh, regarding the cul-de-sacs, um, it's interesting when I look at that, I remember, uh, years ago when I was on the planning commission, one of the hated things was cul-de-sacs, and here we are looking at cul-de-sacs, and so, I don't know if that's changed, uh, with, uh, um, public utilities and, and plowing and so forth, but I understand the, the likeness of residents liking cul-de-sacs, but, uh, that seems to go against what I remember on the, on the commission, uh, and, you know, for the extension going out to north to the township, I think a fair consideration too is, is emergency services, and, uh, um, that would be a much quicker way to get out to some of those areas, uh, if that was, if that was through, so I think, uh, that deserves your, your consideration. The other part was, um, you know, parkland, and again, when I reference back to the comp plant and, and, uh, um, you know, that area was dead, was, was shown that there needs to be parkland in that area, and I'll be a little selfish now, but as we own the property to the north, I'm wondering who's gonna shoulder the, the brunt of owning, owning the parkland, and, and in all fairness, is it, you know, if someday we bring our, our property into the city, um, you know, I can tell you that, um, the developers of this parcel are gonna make a heck of a lot more money, uh, selling lots than, uh, designating some of their parkland. I know that there's a, there's a, there's a switch or whatnot, but I can almost guarantee about every developer will rather write the check and not have to deal with the parkland. So, um, I guess, uh, I think not even having any discussion about parkland is, and maybe there will be, but I think, uh, when you talk about thirty-eight lots and the size of that, I think, um, you need to recognize that, because, uh, you know, frankly, I don't know what'll happen to our property, maybe it, maybe it'll, maybe I won't see it develop, maybe I will, I can tell you that, uh, you know, when you talked about, um, people interested in land, I can't think of the last time when a developer has approached us about that property that, um, butts up against city property, the only thing that, um, we've been interested, we've been approached on the solar panels, so, um, you know, maybe that's the route we should go, but, uh, that's just a couple of comments.
Thanks, Ron.
Uh, Commissioner Mike Paradise again from Bigelow Homes. I know I said my piece, so I'm just up here to answer some questions, but I would like to talk about the cul-de-sacs, and, and Rod is right, it's more desirable from the people that live out there that'd rather live on a cul-de-sac. That's one of the reasons why, of course, we don't want the road to go through. But in defense of the cul-de-sacs here, when we do them in town, typically a cul-de-sac lot is the narrowest lot, the fronts of those lots are fairly narrow, they've got the driveway, they've got city sidewalks, so there's a real challenge when you get to snow storage. Out here, we're gonna have larger setbacks, larger lots, where the snow storage doesn't become the issue that it does in town. And then I'm open for any questions, or...
Any questions with Mike?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Hey, man, I forgot my piece of paper. Let us hold, six, two five six seven six, six hundred twenty-fifth street. Another thing I disagree with Casson is they don't put sidewalks, curb, or gutter in. And if you like your children playing in the streets, go right ahead, thank you.
Carrie Hupman, two five six eight oh, six hundred twenty-fifth street. I look at this, and I see the east side of my property, the west side of this plan here, and I see, yes, it's supposed to be a dry lot for water storage, but I also, when I go down the bike trail in town and use those facilities, I see a lot of, um, storage ponds that are supposed to be dry, and I see old water in them a lot. And I know that a lot of water goes across these fields, and yes, you can say you've walked through them, but I think you should also walk through them when it's a really warm day after a lot of snow and, and see where all this water runs, and, um, that's a pretty big, uh, that's a pretty big, pretty big area we share, and I would really like to know, I'm gonna build a water, so that, you know, part of your wet, dry lot solution isn't on my property. That's all, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
You wanna speak to the hydrology a little bit, Jesse?
Yeah, she would, yeah. Looking at that pond specifically, um, that one, uh, from looking at the soil boardings that were done in that area, there is sand that's down further. So we actually, in the whole area, are gonna have to do three feet, three foot of soil corrections, where we're going to take out the material that's not as, that doesn't have as high of an infiltration rate. We'll take those materials out and put in better materials from the site to help that all infiltrate that, um, water down into the ground at the best that we can. Now, we can't stop every drop of water that's gonna go through there, 'cause that is a natural, that natural waterway through there, but we are doing our best to reduce that runoff, and part of that is, um, by this becoming a low-density residential. We're not adding as much impervious surfaces, um, we're allowing these, the water conveyance to be a, uh, grassed swale in lieu of concrete pipes. Um, so, we're trying to follow all the, I guess, the regulations that we can to slow that water down and infiltrate the lower storms, higher storms will still pasture as they do, um, just hopefully at a slower rate.
Jesse, would you mind, uh, speaking also regarding the state standards for controlling flow?
Yeah, you, um, so you look at the pre, and the, the pre-developed runoff from the site, which this is a farmed site today, that is all, um, to, uh, plowed or a farmed field, that has a rather high runoff rate. Um, when we look at the post-development, we're gonna look at what all of the houses would be for hard surface, the new roads, but we're also gonna take into, um, consideration that we are going to seed or have grass over the lump of the site to help slow that water down too. Uh, so, you're typically required to infiltrate or not release the two-year storm, which can be a, I can't, can't think of the exact inches of rain that is off the top of my head, but a one to two-year storm, um, would be required to be infiltrated into the ground, uh, for all new hard surfaces created within the subdivision. And then your higher storm events, the fifty, the hundred year, you have to make sure that those are reduced, and we actually have, um, with the stormwater report that would go with the final plan, um, all of those areas have reduced, uh, quite a bit. So I don't have those numbers right off the top of my head right now.
But those are all set by state statute?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I'm about to. Any further comments? All right, I'll close the public hearing. And discussion from the panel.
I've got a question for our fire chief, uh, since he sits on the planning commission, what, what is his thoughts of a, a road being all the way through there, and safety vehicles, and how things are done, and which jurisdictions cover where, and just to kinda get your input?
Uh, well, from a, from a fire response, um, you know, obviously it would be, it would be beneficial to have, to have that road connected, um, but our standards and the standards that this road and this cul-de-sac will be built...
Sure.
Compared to when that township road was put in, um, I, I also have grown up in this community, in this town for, for a very long time, I've had a lot of friends that have lived out in that area, um, it's a, it's a very small, very narrow...
Yeah.
... township road. Um, uh, I don't think, unless the city has a, an extensive conversation with the township about improving that road, um, that, that personally, I, I... The improvement or the connection of the road isn't gonna make that big a difference from a, from an emergency standpoint and a response standpoint, um, to respond out there. Um, the impact on that township road with the increased traffic flow...
Right.
That I think it would...
Oh, yeah.
I, I think is a, is a, is a greater, you know, until that road is improved...
Right.
Um, or if the township and the people that are out there are willing to, uh, improve that road, uh, I think it's a, it's a wash, I don't, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's a...
And not being a fireman, you probably, it's quicker to go down fifty-seven to the, to fifteen to get wherever you wanna go versus trying to travel through town.
Yeah.
You know, through a school zone and everything else.
Yep, it's, it's all dependent on time of day.
Sure.
So...
My, uh, my other question is for, for Mike. What, um, I mean, ultimately, I'm sure you guys looked at this both ways of just doing something in the township, which is putting, what, two-acre lots in, kinda like what happened in Little's there, versus, could you, just, how did you arrange it where you're at today? Because we don't know all the behind the scenes, we just know what you've, what you've presented today, and...
Yeah, uh, Mike Paradise again from Bigelow Homes. Yeah, Tony did a lot of that, but, you know, ideally as a, a future homeowner, you're gonna want city sewer and water. People don't want low water and septic systems, they want that peace of mind that the city's taking care of their... the city's taking care of their sewer and water. So, from a standpoint of building the homes, it's more desirable.
What about from a, you know, a township, just more like the two-acre lots versus going to the city lots?
Well, you go to the bigger lots, you get less homes out there.
Yeah.
So, you just don't have the amount of, uh, homeowners that you would if we can get it in the city. And if it's in the city, it'd be nice to have a little higher density.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, those aren't two-acre lots. Thirty-eight divided by fifty-one is not two.
No, they're acre lots. Right. Putting in the township, they'd be two-acre lots. So, you'd go from thirty-eight to basically probably twenty houses out there versus thirty-eight houses, 'cause the roads would need to be different, so.
Not economically feasible though.
Yeah. Well, yeah. And that's not, that's not what's being asked by us today, so.
Right, yeah. Joe, any-
Is there curb and gutter in each kind of additions? Like, uh, junk addition out there's got curb and gutter.
Well, yep, yep.
I think curb and gutter makes sense if we're gonna put in three lots per acre and have, what, sixty lots out there? Then it all makes sense to start putting in curb and gutter.
Yeah, Joe?
Yeah, I don't have any other.
Lonny?
My only issue is, and it's been every one of these additions with one entrance and one entrance only, it just, eventually, and I know you have access out future to the east, but who knows how long that will be sitting there? Just like up behind this, the field, there's one entrance for how long? One entrance only. All, if, if you would've had one of those seven-inch rains that took out that street, and even once you get the entrance into Littles, that stream is connected to both of them, now you have no entrance. And I know there isn't this big a flood issue with this particular lot, but God, we need to do something moving forward, or we are pushing on the contractors or developers to have two accesses. Um, I realize that the people in the township aren't gonna like being connected to a city street, but eventually, not our lifetime probably, but eventually, that will probably be a next into the city of Casson sometime. And it's just these one-intrance developments that seem to be an issue eventually, and I would like to see that disappear.
Yeah, Sheldon?
Well, I know, you and I both lived in kinda that same area, and I know what Lonny's talking about. And coming up into Casson Meadows, that was, I think, living on a prayer that that something didn't happen in there. That's, there's a lot of water. So, water's always been something on my mind as far as what we're gonna do with it and how we're gonna treat it, as far as, if we were to have one road wash out, I agree a lot with Lonny, having accesses to some of these places, you know, this, you know, this isn't Casson Meadows, but the right-
There's other issues that can happen.
Oh, man. Could you imagine if, if that were, what, a hundred houses up in there? You know, we're not talking as many in this, but the point being that we have to make sure that we can get in, in access to, for one emergencies and to the residents, you know, if something were to happen. So, I am also following Lonny's lead on making sure in the future that we don't box people in, in houses. So, I don't know what we can do about it in something like this, but I agree that we need to, um, take a look at it, a hard look.
Colin?
Yeah, I would just, uh, echo Lonny's comments about, um, you know, providing more than one access through there, you know. The way it's kinda, I understand there's kinda that spur-off there to the east, but, uh, again, you know, when is that, would that ever get developed as a, as a through, uh, through drive? So, you know, you're gonna sorta have this bottleneck on the sixteenth, you know, at rush hour times, potentially, you know.
And that entrance is at the bottom of the hill.
So. I, I understand there are, uh, topographic challenges to the site, to the, you know, to the north and to the, to the west with the creek there. So, that's maybe understandable for, uh, for a cul-de-sac, you know. Um, but we should look at ways so we have some good, uh, good traffic flow. So, you know, if there, if that entrance on the sixteenth was, you know, blocked for some reason, what do the people do? Where, how do they get out?
Yeah.
City planner tells us, what is, what is good for one entrance and what is, you know, how many houses is, is there a code? Is there something that goes along with something that?
Laura, that's to you, I think.
All right. Uh, typically, as from a, how many houses on one entrance, we actually usually, uh, go by the standards that are, um, fire and safety. Uh, you know, that's typically what we follow. Um, other planning elements that, um, are maybe not as dire that we, rule of thumb that we like to follow by is just, uh, just street connectivity in general, um, makes a lot of sense within, uh, particularly within urban areas, um, as well as connectivity of your pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Um, I think the discussion up here of the connectivity, um, I honestly don't, uh, I don't know what the correct, uh, direction is. I think, um, you all know the area much better than I do, and, um, I believe that one entrance to a subdivision of this kind is not necessarily, um, a dangerous thing, but certainly having multiple entrances, um, or access points, uh, is would be helpful.
Jesse, you got an answer for that one? Maybe not so much for this one, but as future developments come up, it's, you know, something top of mind.
Probably lots you should have, but not a one. I don't. Uh, we typically will do exactly what Laura said. We're gonna, uh, reach out to the, the local, the city, the fire department, and, uh, some of that depends upon how busy your road is out front.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, you're always wanting to, just like this, we're planning for a connection to the east, you know, so we, you, I think you always wanna try to plan for that. Um, and as parks go to the north, I, I don't know what to tell you is the best to do there. Um, I do have concerns, I guess, about the neighbors to the north, about the stability of that road to the north. Um, I know what the streets are like in town because you've got control over the section that is built there. Um, as far as for what you're connecting into, I don't know. Um, and, and I guess the other part of that, the only other thing I say there is, you know, um, I don't believe Tony and I haven't reached out to any of the residents about a connection or the township. I, I don't think that's been necessarily brought up to the township yet. Um, that, you know, we probably would wanna find out their comments. They might not want us to connect into it either. So, sorry, I gave you a really wishy-washy hint.
We're used to that.
That makes this plan sound a little premature, actually.
This is a preliminary plat, so.
Yeah.
That's why we're having these discussions.
Yep. So, you know, I've got a multitude of things. You know, I, I echo Rod's point. I hate cul-de-sacs to a passion, and I think all of this and the concerns that we have about connections and placement of cul-de-sacs is at the fault of the city by not having, um, transportation maps established. Um, it's, it's somewhat unfair to the developers to come to this level, and then all of a sudden we were, we're now talking about the need for connections or placement of streets where we should've had that discussion long before now. And I'm gonna ask Tim to try to get something on the next agenda so we can at least start tackling some sort of a transportation map in all of these land-use areas, uh, that we have. Um, I agree with the comments that made about a single driveway. And Sixteenth Street, at least for the short term, is gonna get extremely busy as soon as Highway fifty-seven goes under development next year. Uh-
Very busy?
Mm-hmm.
It's a, it's a very, very busy.
Yeah, it's still, yeah, a really busy street now, and it's gonna get more so. So, there is a concern about safety, particularly as, uh, you pointed out, it's, it's at the bottom of a hill there, so.
Yeah, and that's right over the top of, yeah, that's right over the hill.
Yeah, we would, we're gonna have to call on our police department to be able to monitor that quite closely, because I'm, I'm pretty sure by the time they get to the top of the hill, they're not doing thirty miles an hour, uh, leaving the town.
Our police are out there quite often.
On the inside, coming in, but not going out.
I see them out there a lot.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, that's something that we may have to talk about too.
And I have a question. So, when we just redid the road, was this kind of, and you're saying this was kind of already a plan that the town was gonna build out this way, why would you revamp the road like you did if this was kind of in the plan?
You didn't do anything with the road, did we?
Well-
Yeah, you lowered the top of the hill, you made it, actually, it's harder to see it coming.
Yeah, no, the, the six, the improvement of Sixteenth Street, this wasn't on the radar at that point.
Yeah, and that was only a few years ago.
Yeah.
So, this is really relatively new.
It is relatively new, yeah. And that's why we're discussing the planning component of it.
And that's why I also think this is very premature, and I think there's a lot of topics that have been brought up that probably still need to be addressed before something like this would be approved.
Yep, I understand, but I'm, at this point, I need to cut you off, because we've had the public hearing already, and we can't get into this to and fro, uh, regarding this. So, uh, we'll leave the discussion to the panel only. Um, in addition, uh, I, I would like to see that connection, but I think there's a number of issues that were brought up that the, the discussion wasn't with the property owners, the discussion hasn't taken place with the township. Um, you know, there are some concerns regarding, you know, forcing that on the developer at this point, you know, in addition to surprising them as far as the preliminary plat. But that said, I think that discussion should take place prior to any final plat to see if that is a possibility.
If it can be worked out.
If it can be worked out. So, I would suggest that we include that as far as a recommendation to the council on the approval of the preliminary plat, that that, those discussions take place.
But not being held to it.
Yep.
Right. I agree.
Okay. So, any further discussion? Okay. Um, I thank everybody for attending, and we'll just move forward with, uh, we've got the recommendations in front of us here. So, recommendations, uh, regarding the, looking at that, uh, possible connection, along with five other, um, conditions here. Um, and that being a preliminary plat conditional upon the annexation of the property to the city. Uh, two, the preliminary can be conditional upon the approval of a comprehensive plan amendment. Uh, the applicant shall add setback lines to the individual lots on the preliminary plat prior to submittal of the final plat. The applicant shall record with the plat that all the properties within will be required to submit a grading plan. And other changes as indicated by the city engineer in their letter to the city administrator dated March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, as drawn on the plans, attached to the, shall, attached to the letter shall be required prior to submittal of the final plat. Uh, and then we're adding the sixth, that, uh, the discussion with the township and property owners, uh, be taken and be considered for the potential street connection.
Let me ask you a question on number six.
Yep.
When you say property owners-
Along that township road.
Uh, the one to the north?
To the north.
Okay. Just wanna make sure we get the definition of, property owners can, can be very vague.
Yeah, property owners to the north along that township road.
Or is that just a discussion with the township, and it's really their job to communicate to their-
Well, I will discuss it with the township.
Yeah.
And obviously, uh, you know, if they're doing their job, and I'm sure they will be, they'll be discussing with those property owners themselves, so.
Yes, I mean, just ask the developer to-
I mean, most likely what we would end up doing is probably having a joint meeting with the developer, the township representatives-
Sure.
-and staff or representatives of this board too, just to make sure everybody's on the same page before we finalize things. If that makes sense, Mike? Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm open for a motion with those conditions.
I'll make a motion.
We've got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
You've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right, uh, again, I thank everybody for coming and providing your comments. Um, we're gonna move on to our agenda. We've an issue with discussion regarding kennels.
Way off topic for our night, but thank you, Laura. Appreciate it.
Don't we want her to stay?
Thank you all.
Laura, hey, just hang on one second, would you?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so this is an issue that was brought to my attention, uh, via the city clerk and our police department. And included in your packet, you have information regarding the, uh, the kennels. I don't know, Linda, if you wanna highlight kind of what your concerns are?
Well, the definition of a kennel is four or more dogs. And in the previous ordinance, kennels were allowed in the Ag district. We don't have an Ag district anymore. So, kennels are not allowed in town. What, what the police were looking for was something more, um, specific. So, I'm suggesting in, in your packet, under ninety-point-oh-three is renumbering those and puts, putting, number one, no person shall own, care for, or have custody or control of more than three dogs within the city limits. And then we have the definition of a kennel is four or more. But otherwise, there's nowhere in here that states three dogs, which is what the owners were arguing with the police about.
Linda, did you have any more, um, or get any more information in regards to what we were talking about the other day in regards to service animals? And whether or not that's, you know, are those, is that like a, like a health prescription? And we wouldn't technically be counting that as a, a dog-
Domestic dog.
A domestic dog?
We were gonna talk to the city attorney about that on Wednesday night.
Okay.
Um, that, we haven't. This so far is just about the wording in the ordinance. And then, um, under the uses, animal and pet services, the, it's permitted with standards. And then the standards actually prohibit, um, boarding. So, I mean, Carriage House right now has a conditional use permit for being there, and that was allowed in the conditional use permit, so they're grandfathered in. But if we had another vet come in that wanted to board, you know, I'm wondering if we want to take a look at allowing it in a, in a C-three or C-one or C-two somewhere in, and do you wanna allow it, you know, do you wanna change the ordinance to allow boarding somewhere for vet clinics? Or boarding at all, if somebody just wants to board animals?
Right now, if you have three dogs or lost, you're fined. If you have four, you're considered a kennel.
Yeah.
And kennels are not allowed.
And that's the way the old ordinance was too.
I think we do need to address that. We throw a monkey wrench in there, what happens if your dog has puppies? Well, this is overage.
All you can consider a dog until it's over six months old.
Right, recovery.
So, that's when the dog is. So, if you have puppies, you're okay for six months.
And there is, there is exception language in the, in the current ordinance under the kennels. And there is, there is exception language in the, in the current ordinance under the kennels that it does not include veterinarian license to practice in the state.
Yep, but our veterinarians aren't allowed to board. I mean, they are now because they have conditional use permits on there. So that's where some of this is getting a little, um...
Need some clarification.
Muddy. It just needs some clarification.
Boarding would be different than treating, correct?
Right. I mean, if, if it's a vet clinic and they're doing surgery, they expect to keep them overnight, but they're not outside barking the whole time either.
And they're not advertising as you can, you know, take your dog and...
Take vacation and drop the dog off for a week for just that, right?
So the issue was, is somebody had four dogs and the police had a nuisance, so they went and checked on it and basically came back and see that they have, the city only allows for three dogs. They have four dogs. They're violating the ordinance, so...
It goes a little deeper than that, but...
I'm sure it does.
It gets, it gets a little messy.
I'm not sure if you wanna hear the whole story.
No, I don't wanna hear the whole story.
Maybe another time, no?
I'm just trying to, you know, I mean, ultimately, I mean, I'm not saying this isn't a good discussion. It's, it's, uh, um...
But this is where they were arguing, and it's like, it is not spelled out that its three dogs are allowed.
But where, I, I guess where is it not? If it says four or more, you're a kennel, doesn't that automatically say that under three, you're fine?
Yes, and it's just, it's just, it's up to you guys. I'm only bringing it to you if you want to spell it out more. I thought it was fine too because I'm telling the police, yeah, it says it right here.
Right.
So, you know, I said I would bring it and see if you guys wanna do anything about it. If you, if you are happy and you understand it and you think this is fine, it's fine. I mean, that's the way I understood it too.
Well, ultimately, there was a nuisance that was called in.
Correct.
And that's why, that's why it's being addressed, and that's why we have ordinances and laws.
Which is then how we got into the whole kennel thing, and the kennels weren't allowed anywhere. So that's where we found that problem.
Yeah, we're typically reactionary to these complaints, so...
But there's nothing really to be reactionary here to a certain extent, 'cause it's, I don't know. To me, it's, it's pretty clear as day, and, and, you can have three dogs. Now we better get into, well, is it three, is it three poodles or three rottweilers? You know, I mean...
I mean, there's still an animal ordinance where, uh, there's certain dangerous dogs.
Right.
So, that's, that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, I do think some clarity, I mean, I think what the police are looking at is, if they issue a citation and someone decides to fight that, they're gonna take this, you know, some ambiguity to the judge and say, we don't think this really applies. Now, is that likely to happen? I, I don't know, but someone may choose to do so. Um, and I think, you know, to be honest with you, if adding one line, no person shall have more than three dogs in the household, that maybe just makes it easier and say, we're done with it, we don't have to worry about it, and the police can look right to that when they write the ticket for fifty bucks, you know?
Yeah, no, I don't disagree. I just...
No, I think you're right. We're covered. It's just a matter of, they want, the police ask you after...
It's easier for them to do their job if we add some words.
Let's make it straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's the easy part. So then the, the second part of this question is, what do you wanna do about kennels? Do you want to add that to the animal pet services in those, in, where it's permitted with standards and C-one, two, three, and I, I-one?
So that's only being allowed, if we do that in a commercial setting?
Or industrial, right.
Or industrial.
I-one would be, yep.
It would not be R-ones. They couldn't, you, you couldn't move in next to you and, and decide they're gonna put in six kennels so that they had, they were harboring dogs.
I, I like that.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
So then we'll just add to the, um, permitted with standards, boarding? Or move, change that, 'cause right now it says...
It's not.
It's not allowed.
Yeah.
So we will, we will change that to it is.
Laura, can you write something up and, and bring that to us next month?
I'll just make one comment. I, I've gotta, you know, I don't really care at the end of the day, one way or another, where this goes. But I'm just thinking, if somebody has foie, four toy poodles that are completely housed in a house, not providing any sort of a nuisance, what's the harm?
Nobody would know that either. These are always complaint driven.
Oh, yeah, I know, but as soon as we put it down on paper, somebody's gonna find out about it, and they're gonna say, you said we can only have three in the community. This person has four. So I wondered if we should not only tweak it by saying, these are dogs that are kennelled outside, or something like that?
Well, and we should know anyway because they're supposed to be permitted.
They'll be licensed.
I, I, I just, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, so I...
I mean, if they're supposed to be licensed, then you, I mean, right there, the police has the rule, well, your dog's not licensed, so...
Well, they got him on that one, yeah.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Because they had only licensed two.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can only license two dogs in the city?
No, they, they had only licensed...
Only had two, okay.
I mean, again, it comes back to, someone has to complain.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, yeah.
But I don't think we wanna get too specific as to they have to be kennelled outdoors because a lot of these complaints are coming because people let them out, and then they start...
And they're not taking care of them, yeah.
Yeah, but they start barking, and they're out there for an hour. They're not being kennelled out there. They still sleep in the house.
Yeah, no, I, you know, I'm just trying to play devil's advocate here before we get in the weeds. Okay, well, Laura, you got the challenge.
Actually, I think if you take the language that I put on, on that... Sorry, can you say that again? You have the, the copy of the language that I have. I think that's, that's probably pretty good, and we just...
We may add a little change to that.
That's fine.
But it will be similar to that, I think. I'm just thinking, do we wanna do three dogs or four pets? Because you run into the issue with cats too, so... They're not gonna be barking, but I definitely know people get nuisance calls for an excessive number of cats.
I agree with...
A four cat can be way outnumbered if it's three dogs and one cat, but that isn't my problem.
I agree with you.
If winters had seven cats, I would've been like, sick and sick of it.
Does that make sense?
That is nothing compared to...
It does. We don't license cats. We don't pick up cats. We don't do anything with cats.
Yeah, so then you don't have any way to regulate.
So we don't have any...
Maybe not, I don't know.
Drop them off next...
Cats, cats are a whole different animal.
And if you say pets, what if you have an aggregate of more than three? What if you have a goldfish and a cat and a dog and a lizard?
Right, right, now you have, you know...
Those are pets.
Oh, that's fair, that's fair.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll hash out some language.
How about that?
Bring it back. Do whatever he thinks next month.
Where they live.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks for standing in tonight.
Good. Uh, other, what do we have for other? Nada?
I don't have anything else.
Did we, um, uh, did Ronnie do an inspection out to Wilkers? Did you ever make contact?
No, I'll talk to Ronnie and make sure that gets done this morning.
Ronnie had, uh, made comment about that.
Yep.
And just to have him, you know, check, check in, you know...
Yeah, I'll, I'll help, I'll check on that, so I'll have a result hopefully for you next month.
Hey, 'cause he hasn't done anything with the barrier or any of that, has he?
We'll check on that for sure.
Well, and now that we're kinda getting into spring, just a, a reminder, touch base wouldn't necessarily be bad either, so...
He's out there now, Wilkers.
Yep.
Okay, uh, there's nothing else. Seeing that we've completed the agenda, I will adjourn the meeting. All right.
Bolivia.
And I was gonna say, we're not West Concord.